Okay, at this time we are entering back from executive session. The time is nine forty-three and a motion.
May I move to come back to the executive session?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Here's a motion by Councilman Naredo, second by Councilwoman Destino, all of those. Motion for adjournment.
Thanks. At this time, I would like to take our case that the average score, which is the city's score given to the city manager, is a five point six seven for this review. And at this time, as requested by the city manager, the actual review of individual discussion and items will be conducted in open section.
Now, do we have Henry, or do we just start?
It's how you'd like to proceed.
Mr. Gulliver, would you like to start?
I think you're doing a commendable job this turn, and I understand that you have inherited a large task, and I know it can't be done in the minimal amount of time that you've been here. And it hasn't completed a year yet. If there's one thing that I could change, it's probably just to make things a little bit easier for, to be a better listener for the citizens as well as the employees, to make things as easy as possible, that, you know, for whatever extent, whatever may be going on, to keep it internally before it goes, gets a little bit, before it escalates into something more expensive, or more to take it to a judge, or whatever it may be. But I think you're doing a commendable job, and you've been up to good work.
Thank you.
I believe that you're doing a good job as far as trying to move the city forward. Again, when you first came in, there were a lot of issues that we already had to deal with. The only thing that I've seen that might need improvement is communication with the employees, because what I think sometimes people when they feel that you tell somebody something, and tell another person something different, so they have a hard time with what does she really want us to do. So I think if you have more of a better communication with the employees in these specific, also when you have conversations, let's say disciplinary, or rather, that you write it down, the discussions that you have, have it on record, so they can't come back and say, "Well, she told me this," and you can say, "Well, here it is." Because I know that happens, so, but other than that, I believe you're doing a good job. You've been involved with the different groups and organizations in town, and, not in good feeling, I like the way that you present things to us, or to the different groups. I believe you take the strike of criticism well, and I appreciate that. But like I say, I think you're doing a good job for the time that you've been here.
My thoughts are, because I spend more time here at City Hall than the councilman do, even though they are invited and involved, is that you need to keep up communications with us. Anytime that something's going on, or there's a problem, you can let us know, just a simple text, so that we're all aware, because a lot of times, by the time you send us a message, you've already heard it from the public, you know, before we even know. So we would like to be kept abreast prior to that happening.
Be it text, or be it email, which is that.
You don't have preference?
I'm gonna text. I prefer a text.
You can do a text to make sure it's not a mass text, because if somebody responds, you get in the corner.
No, just to let us know.
You can tweet me.
My audience is a bit physical. Another thing that I've noticed also is that sometimes there seems to be employee favoritism. I've seen different employees in different offices, and I see how they're so relaxed, and there's other employees there, and I'm just thinking, okay, this employee's in here, if he had a complaint, or whatever, he should have been going straight to your office, we could address it, instead of sitting there all relaxed and whatever, making it, and I'm thinking, and all the other employees out there are out there in the sun working, while this is here enjoying, having fun. You know, so I see that happening often, and I'd like to see it be more fairly across the board, if you could say. Another thing I don't like to see is that we use the suburban to go to lunch. I don't think that's city business for a personal lunch. I don't think that the vehicle should be used for that. I have no problem with it being used for any kind of city business, that we see and hear from out there in the community, or I hear out in the community, they're using the vehicle for their own personal lunches. Well, it doesn't look right, and I don't think we should do that. I'd like to be able to get, or for us to get more current information. It seems like every time we get a report, we're going over the same thing, over and over. We already know what that is, if we could just get updates on what was passed, if it was not taken care of, and see what other issues we have facing us. I don't like to see when, and I know this happened twice this week, where there's employees in your office, and there's other employees being talked about. I don't think that should be happening. I think it should be between you and HR, that's really the way it should be, but other employees should not be in there when you're talking about another employee. And I just want us to be very conscientious of how we spend our money for the city. We're barely getting out of this insolvency. I would like for us to make sure that before we spend any kind of money, that it is something that is really needed for the city, and that it is spent correctly. You know, just because there's extra money there, doesn't mean that we have it to go out and splurge on something, or it's something that we can do without. I think we still should be keeping the belts tight a little bit, until we can start building that reserve. I'm not saying that if an emergency comes up, you shouldn't do that, because that is something you need to make a decision on, but I just don't want you to see any useless money being spent, okay? And one example of that, if you can do it. I knew that at one time, you had told us that you were working on finding out on the hotel motel tax, that there was somebody out there that could check for us, if we're getting paid and stuff.
Yes, I don't remember what you said. There's actually something, well, something with the accounting record, and the budget that we found in the South. It was to be on this agenda, but it was too full for our town presentation tonight. So I'm assuming that that would be on the July agenda. We need the organization to look at, to do an audit, so everybody can say to do an audit of what we're collecting on the hotel motel tax, as well as our sales tax. So we can see that we're collecting everything we're supposed to collect, and I believe they go by three years, is that right? Over three years, because they assess that. So that's what we need from the council.
And I also do appreciate your involvement in the community, because you know how strong I am believing in that. You're always available for going out and speaking to people, the groups. In fact, you spoke to my brother this week. That gives a good outlook for the city, when they're being kept of what's going on in the city. You know, a lot of times, they don't come to us and ask us, but you can lead our eyes there, you know, and telling them where we're at, and what we're doing. They like to hear that. So I do appreciate that. And I really do appreciate that you do with me on the cleanup, because we already believe in cleaning up our city, to make it look that much more nicer, so that people are wanting to come to our city. And I know that you and I have talked on a lot of projects, and I'm sure that we continue working on those projects, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is this why you're delighted, as I mentioned?
Yes.
Mr. N?
It's good to spur things in that.
I'm gonna give you a quick summary of what I wrote, and then I apologize over here, but I gotta leave. I got my son at the babysitter, I have to go there in about an hour, my wife's not here, so I'm gonna give you my report, and I gotta go. I gave you a favorable review, you know, of the one to ten, it was a seven. I appreciate everything you've done with the city, all the information you give us on the bi-weekly basis, your project planning, you always provide sufficient information, pictures on what's going on, on your reports, you're on top of the budget, as far as Congress coming in, even with the change with the lady's name, but left, left, and now Connie here, as far as staying on top of it, and the city's moving forward from a fiscal standpoint. So that's very good, and that's very important, but one of the most important positions you hold. As far as our interactions with your employees, because I don't talk to your employees, so I don't get involved on, you know, everything about your interactions with them, but it seems that there are some problems, or what everybody else is bringing up, but that's gonna happen, and there's a change of leadership at the helm, so I know you'll address those, if you want to be in the police department, or your other department head, so good luck with that, and I know you'll get to where we need to be. Real quick, just all the things I could, you could improve on, married with everybody else has said, just a little bit on the communication, just keeping us afloat on what's going on, you know. I know you normally do it, something major like this bill, anything like that, but just maybe they're sending out, you know, a text, an email, and just kind of keeping us informed. I know part of it's my fault, I don't come in here a lot, I admit that, you know, I've got a full-time job, and a full-time family, so, you know, I get my packet, you know, look what's important, but I'm not gonna come in here and mess with the daily operations, I just don't have the time for it. So, part of it's my fault, as far as the communication, I've always been involved with what's going on. And, other than that, I mean, good job, look forward to working with you, and good night.
Mr. N?
He wants to go next.
I have documents that include some action items, and I'll let you have a copy afterwards, but I would like to read it. And I think you need to understand that my term ended in November of 2013, and I was elected again in the special election of May fourteenth, and I was gone for six months. So my notes are comprised from information provided by Mrs. Turner, the research, and my participation for one month prior to the term ending in 2013, and information provided since the May election, okay? So the reports we've received for this review include a lot of repetitious information. This council and its citizens need substance, not fluff to fill report pages, because a lot of our reports that you gave us included a lot of repetitious things, and I didn't see a whole lot of new stuff. You can save yourself a lot of paper, or the city anyway. But I can show numerous instances where this happens with reports, attachments given to us for this review, response of Chief Averro on agreements. A report was already submitted by Lieutenant Evans directly by the city manager during the study, and the city manager reviewed the verbiage in her report. So it's not necessary to do all that. If we get one copy of something, that's efficient. So typically, we use a two-part appraisal form for the review, the evaluation form completed by each council member, and the city manager self-reviewed. For this evaluation, Mrs. Turner distributed a packet of information that included the city manager's performance appraisal form, and completed ninety-day self-performance appraisal, where she rated herself a six. So, the six, and then our rating, they're very close, so that was good. And then the preliminary thirty-day review date that I quoted, 2013, that you gave us, and the reason I'm listing these is because I was gone for six months, okay? So all of this information I used to comprise it before. So, and the ongoing duties, goals, and objectives, and your city manager's report for November, and the one for June the twelfth. So our responsibility, city council members, is to review your performance objectively. A form is available, but I chose to use a combination of the form and the notes. And your duties are, the city manager is set forth in the charter, and also in your employment contract, and of course, exhibit D, which includes goals and objectives. So based on all of that, I have read through it, and I have made some recommendations along with some action items. So, item three B seven, which is in the city charter's employment agreement, states that by January the thirty-first, 2014, or such other date as the council may specify, prepare to submit a five-year plan, updated yearly, that covers the budget and requirements of all city departments. This plan should be integral to the five-year capital improvements program planning and zoning commission, for our foundation, for A and for B, all working together for the city council as the appointed authority. My question is, was this due date for the five-year plan changed, or was this done during the time that I was gone? You know, or it still hasn't been done, okay? So, the first action item would be the three B seven, the charter and employment agreement, the city manager shall prepare and recommend a council directive to institute and require a coordinated and comprehensive policy to inform the citizens of the planning, development, and growth policies being considered, including participation with the Chamber of Commerce and other community organizations, and make information available on the city's website through monthly billing, and search social media, and newspaper notes. Regarding the MNS Engineering, Forestville has been described by MNS Engineering Master Plans, dated April 2012, as a vibrant and growing community impacted by the oil and gas boom, with a culturally diverse and growing population. In an effort to maintain the integrity of its cultural roots, and at the same time address the demands of both permanent and temporary workers, Forestville must be positioned to do the following. Create a plan implementation to address the high and low priorities as recommended by MNS Engineering. The high priorities are identified by MNS are to develop the zoning plan, to create and update impactive water, wastewater, and streets, develop a water model of the Forestville Water System, convert to online information sharing, upgrade wastewater treatment plan, and replace it with a concrete sewer line. The city council needs to understand the alignment of resources to support the goals, and some of these may be already in the making. Simply talking about it is not sufficient, we have to have a plan. The city departments and divisions should have annual work plans that are organized around a strategic plan. The plan needs to be communicated repeatedly with every significant communication effort that comes from the city manager's office. So the action item is to recommend, Mrs. Turner, research and best practices to handle current fiscal growth or potential downturn, list and provide a detailed plan for the top ten projects for 2014-15. The next topic is the Insolvency Plan slash Turnaround Plan. This plan has three goals: to return the city to financial stability, to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of operations, to establish best-in-class management policies and procedures. At the time the MNS study was presented, April 2012, the Insolvency Plan could not be addressed. The plan to address budget deficits was introduced in March 2013, to coincide with Budget thirteen-fourteen. City manager Henrietta Turner's contract did not take effect until October the first, 2013. Although contrary to what Mrs. Turner has told me regarding the accountability of the Insolvency Plan, the charter, her employment contract, exhibit D, council directives, all indicate that she is responsible for performing all duties provided by law, charter, local government, and county, is assigned and authorized by the city council, including council directors. So the Insolvency Plan is the city manager's responsibility. And I think you will recall the conversation that we had, that your performance was not based on the Insolvency Plan. Do you recall that?
I believe we were talking about the audit, you had a question about the audit, and you said you wanted to...
Well, the audit included the Insolvency Plan.
Like your audit, which you started, or the audit of the previous audit that was presented, and you wanted to have recommendations from Pat Wagner, but while speaking to the fact that the audit that you did was for last year, before I was here, but that I was not here, I didn't go a part of it, and I didn't think that you could have liked that.
Well, the Insolvency Plan is ongoing, so we need to keep that, and we do need to keep you involved, and the council's responsibility is to ensure that it gets done. So the action item is to present a comprehensive semi-annual review of the turnaround plan, to ensure, because we have not done that, right?
Correct.
To ensure the goals are being met, and how the budget amendments have affected the plan. We must stay vigilant of the reorganization, structure, added expenses, and question all change to budget requests. The city council must require the city manager to comply with this plan. Item two, the relationship with the community, city boards, chamber of commerce, county leaders, local media, city council, and responding to problem situations. It appears that the city manager has established a relationship with the community, the city boards, the chamber of commerce, the county leaders, and specifically, the local media. However, because the council members are ultimately responsible and accountable for whatever happens to the city, we need to be kept apprised of what is happening at all times, so it would behoove the city manager to place more effort into building relationships with all council members. Emphasis should be placed on promoting a positive environment, instead of creating barriers. Mrs. Turner stated in her preliminary thirty-day report, according to the charter, section three point oh eight, neither the city council nor any of its members shall direct the appointment of any person to office by the city manager, or by any of his or her subordinates. Except for the purpose of inquiry, the city council and its members shall deal with administrative services solely through the city manager, and neither the city council or any member thereof should be awarded subsidies or ordnance of the city manager, either publicly or privately. What, Mrs. Turner failed to mention in her thirty-day report, that this charter, section three point oh eight, is preceded by section three point oh seven, which states, "All powers of the city and the determination of all matters of policy shall be vested in the city council." Furthermore, section three point oh seven states, "City council may inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the city and make investigations into municipal affairs, and establish, consolidate, or abolish administrative departments and distribute the work provisions." Bottom line, Mrs. Turner selected section three point oh eight in her thirty-day report was unnecessary. All we want to do is work together and not create barriers. Regarding extended communities, I'm not sure the city manager meets with neighboring government leaders to discuss efficiencies and common interests, or how to develop growth with the oil and gas business. If such discussion explores the outcome of good ideas, or examples of best practices to solve problems, created, we can both typically not report it to the city council. Although the wastewater treatment plan should be at the top of the list, because it affects all aspects of Forestville growth, along with other infrastructure. We have seen immediate short-term attention to the recent spills to equipment failure, but lack urgency on the USDA loan application. Action item number four, present a plan with a timeline for approval of the USDA loan process and the expansion and upgrade of the wastewater treatment plan. Point number three, organizational and human resource management. The city manager has made several changes administratively and redirected responsibilities. For example, since Mrs. Turner's employment, the city has lost several key staff members for various reasons. The primary reason being a lack of communication, and this is been mentioned more than once, poor decision-making, constantly changing her mind, and making it difficult for employees to perform their jobs. The information that I was given alleged that her leadership skills were deficient primarily in organization, decision-making, and communication. Does not use the word software, the word software, to spell-check, or is not skilled in its word. Mrs. Turner's documents are proof of her inability to use correct grammar. Attention to hiring skills staff for key positions is of paramount importance. Minutes such inaccurate, and grammar is also a problem with key personnel. Action item number five, ensure that job descriptions and salary ranges for all positions, particularly for those positions recently filled. City secretary Tom Turler, co-compliance of the physicians soon to be posted, community development director, street supervisor, and wastewater laborer have been reviewed and updated. Action item number six, the city manager needs to show in written and verbal form how all structuring and organizational changes have affected production, and how it is aligned with the master plan, the 2013-14 budget, and the Insolvency Plan. Did it lead to greater efficiency? Did it lead to better teamwork, compatibility of skills, reduced overtime savings, and so forth? Action item number seven, to protect the city from liabilities, the city manager should assure the council semi-annually that the city's compliance requirements have been met, such as licenses, certification, or other educational requirements for all city employees, specifically as it relates to the job description and its requirements of your time of hiring and annual compliance. Regarding police chief Averro, Mrs. Turner has written him on due-to officer complaints, and this council member has identified a pattern on Mrs. Turner's behalf to rid of key employees, instead of identifying their real issues, and working on a plan to correct them. The decision made on the response to the agreements filed in regards to Chief Averro, Mrs. Turner has stated that failure to comply with city policies in the future will result in additional disciplinary action up to, and including the possibility of employment termination. The requirement includes taking leadership classes and continued monitoring of all disciplinary actions. In my opinion, based on Lieutenant Evans' investigation and findings, the disciplinary action imposed by Mrs. Turner is unwarranted and biased. And of course, we weren't decided on that, so it's a good point at this point. Action item number eight, the city manager should recommend no actions to take, and again, that's a good point, we already decided on that, so no action was taken. All right, let's go on. Community outreach, responding to city council requests, particularly when it's received for employees or citizens, should be timely, with assurance that the city is doing everything possible, within its power to assist and comply with requests. An open-door policy always assures the public that we are here for them. The following requests have been conveyed by me to the city manager as citizens' request, and I'm not gonna go over those again, because they've already been communicated, and some things have been done, but apparently, we're still waiting on a trade agreement with the county before any action is taken on some of the requests by citizens. So the action item on that one is to provide timely, written, and verbal responses on citizens' requests. Regarding fiscal management, requires the city manager to continue providing what we've been given, and that is monthly budget reports with percentages of over and under for each budget item. This helps us to pay budgetary concerns more quickly than we can calculate and come up with practical, different solutions. Timely information on completed projects, streets, buildings, water lines, brush, or for example, information regarding the USDA loan for expansion of wastewater treatment plan. The conclusion is, it is a most important, difficult task to appraise an employee. We, the city council, have been entrusted with the responsibility for hiring, managing, and directing the city manager. In my opinion, we need a leader who can execute the needs of Forestville and exceed our citizens' expectations. I have included nine action items in the city manager's evaluation, and I hope that these action items will be considered, edited, or enhanced by the council as a working document. In addition to the action items, I recommend the following. To continue to monitor, adjust, and implement projects or duties as scheduled, define our relationships with our workforce in ways that shows appreciation, respect, integrity, and most of all, safety and fairness. Not sure if employees are provided with annual training on policy procedure training, other continued education for the licenses required. Define our relationship with the community, we need to communicate not only through successes, but the problems we need to solve and offer solutions. For example, the wastewater treatment plan is a top priority for the whole community. The city manager of this city needs to be a leading Forestville, leading Forestville with strategic goals, clarifying the vision and communicating it to the citizens of the city, and most of all, to the city employees and government leaders. We must have leadership that promotes trust, integrity, and respect for all concerned. The city manager must make wise and just decisions, not as an autocratic leader, but as a leader who follows processes that are in place because they promote fairness, and equal opportunity and goodness for all, not just for a few. Although we lack in processes, together we can find solutions for all problems. Ultimately, we must continue to review the current city manager's duties, goals, and set expectations. We must find a way to meet our ongoing budget challenges, as well as our growth. We are not in a position financially to be competitive with other areas of regional governments. We must do things differently if we are to succeed in the long term. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a little quick break, but I don't know if we can mind. So, you know, thank you.
Chris. Yes.
But the, the only problem that, I mean, not the only, but how do you go about writing up, reprimanding people? What are your, because there are certain people that you do it to, or, or, or how is that? Because there was an incident, I don't know if you recall, at, at the sewer plant with a couple of employees. They got into an eternity. What did you do? I don't know that I, I don't know that I can, as they stop me, if, if, if I was, whatever, but to me, it's trying to get how you reprimand one person, you don't reprimand others. But my question to you is, there was two employees that were fighting each other, I mean, not fighting, but arguing back and forth, calling themselves bad words in front of you. What was done by you?
Well, in that particular case, I actually did not make one a supervisor, and the other one was in a medical unit, he actually had a stroke later on that day, and has not returned to work.
I can't, you could...
I said, in that particular case that you're speaking of, I opted not to make one of those employees a supervisor, because he was an interim supervisor, and the other employee hasn't returned to work, he took ill that very day, and has not returned to work at that time, so I haven't had time to address him as of yet. He's been off since that day.
But that's, that's been an ongoing situation. I got a letter from one of the supervisors, and he was, he's a supervisor, but at the same time, he, he directs that young man to do his job, and he tells him where to go. Now, what have you done in the past? And I have a letter that was turned in by that, uh, uh, city employee, talking about how he didn't take any action over there. I've been waiting for them to stab each other, because they, they fought over two or three times.
No, we, we, that's, we're talking, actually, I've been seeing different changes in reference to supervision, so we've actually located another staff member who has a license, and can operate that particular location, to be there to monitor and closely. We also made the assignment as a reference to that, dealing with that one particular supervisor.
But you were right there, and then, what did you do? You didn't, you didn't take no action to say, hey, calm down, go over there, or go home, or, but that's, that's what I'm saying, you had the city manager, you just said, got in your car and said, I'm leaving.
I got my car, and I needed to speak to both of them later on that afternoon, they needed to come to my office, but I said, why don't you go to the hospital that afternoon?
Yeah, but you were there before he went to the hospital. Maybe if you would have sent him home, he would have gone to the hospital, or whatever you would have done, but, but...
I, I dealt with the situation the best way I thought, but...
The letter I got here is from that employee.
Well, I, I don't have...
And that employee is saying a whole bunch of things, and to me, I do feel that you have favoritism toward people. There's people out here that can smoke fifteen, twenty times a day, and you do nothing. And it takes ten minutes of that time, five minutes every smoke break, and fifteen smoke breaks, how much is that? You know, and, and you're, you're heading that pass by, but you want to write up the chief with, with, uh, the no recommendation from Jesse Evans. But what my, my, my thing is, that you're not doing your job when you have somebody fighting in front of you. Now, another thing, when you served, uh, when you gave that reprimand to the chief, did you hand it to him? You couldn't remember it? Did you hand it to him? Or did, or you, or you were like a supervisor, say, come here, let me give you a reprimand? Or did you put it in his box, do you recall that?
Well, I probably spoke to him in his secretary session.
No, what I'm saying is, this is part of, that I don't believe that you're doing the job that you're supposed to do as a city manager. Now, there's other good areas that I have here that you've done, but at the same time, I don't believe, I believe that you can reprimand other people, but to, other employees are afraid to speak up. Other employees have come up to me, and I told this young man here, not to worry, he said, I don't know what I'm gonna do to my job, or what I'm gonna do to it, but I, I need to speak up. This man is a supervisor. And, 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 and he, every time he gives an order, he comes over here and says, uh, he's doing, telling me this. But whatever you're doing to correct this problem.
I will make note, and see what you need to adjust to.
Because my concern is, if it keeps going on, and it's been going on for a while, and something happens, and one of them kills themselves out there, and there's no, no record of saying, well, I sent him home, or I wrote him up, but the chief's got a couple of reprimands, or other people got... But, but to me, I, I'm done, I, I, I don't want to take too much time, but, but I do, when it's time to make a motion, I do want to reprimand you for not giving that reprimand to the chief in person. I, I, I believe that, that, that's like, well, I'm afraid to give it to him, but let me, I mean, if you want to reprimand, you want a, a city, a city job, a city secretary, that's... City manager, you should look face to face and say this. And, and there's other, other, other issues, but, but I believe that you're not doing your job. And, 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 and the thing is, it might be funny to other people, but it, it's all cool. But it's just like the situation in Columbia. You said you were gonna fix that problem, you didn't fix that problem yet. Have you fixed it?
The issue, reference to...
The water running down.
We've made two attempts, and as soon as the water dropped again, we'll try again, there's been an ongoing issue.
What is so hard? For, for the water, for the water, it, it's right there, and to shave that thing where, where it makes it move down so the water can get out of there. I mean, I don't think you need any...
You have to do it twice, and then go out again to re-rain it, so that you can drink.
You know, that, that, all that stuff stays there. It smells, you don't live around that area. But I, I told you, what are you gonna do about taking care, I'll take care of it. That tree, you waiting for somebody to fall, that, that tree to fall on somebody, that, that dying, you say, I'll take care of it. I'm gonna tell you what to do, but, but when, when those kids are playing out there, and that bright tree falls on somebody, what am I gonna do? But, but I'm done now.
You know, I appreciate all the criticism, I'll take, take some notes. I look forward to having a copy of yours, I can give it from the secretary's, so I can make sure I rely on my own speed to address those, and I thank you so much for your time.
Any other questions, and will you adjourn this meeting?
No, I'm gonna make a motion to give her a reprimand on not giving, I, I believe you should give that reprimand in person to the chief.
Can we do that first?
Yeah, under the, the broad, so that we can take a decision, take possible action. Following the decision regarding the city manager, can we have a turnaround person on there? A reprimand would follow in for the, the broad spectrum of that agenda.
Okay.
But I'm just, uh, terminated, you feel, do you feel that you could have done a better job in circumstances than you?
Well, I, I think in hindsight, I can always, I can do a better job, and I still like things on this two minute, so. If you could, if you could agree, I think that would be a good, good idea.
Do you have a motion to issue a reprimand? Do you want to have a second?
I second it.
Yeah, the motion by Councilman Monori, second by Councilman Castillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I vote with the reprimand. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 10:23.
Any other statements?
You've already adjourned the meeting. Look, there was comments? I gave one.